Called the meeting in order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April 12th, 2016 county commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he can help you with that. With that, we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meeting minutes from April 5th, 2016. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passed unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $3,510,229.07.
Hey, the bills?
Second.
Any comments, Commissioner Barth?
Again, Madam Chair, this week includes $3 million that we remitted to the state for motor vehicle fees that we have collected. So it's kind of pushes our total higher than it otherwise would be.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
At four, zero.
Oh, excuse me, yep. Four to zero. Motion passes four to zero. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaha County Sheriff's report for March 2016 is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions for HR? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number six is applications for abatement. Pam Nelson.
Morning.
Morning Pam.
We have three property tax assessment freezes. One for record ID 16032 for the amount of $509.20. Record ID 53264 for $1,483.42. And record ID 42521 for record, that was the record ID, and the amount of the abatement is $1,044.12.
And those are property abatements. Are there any questions for Pam?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve all three. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is notices and requests, there are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Robert Wilson.
Good morning Commissioners, Robert Wilson with the Commission Office. Commission Office has received an application for a compromise of a county aid lien for DPN069017. The amount is $2,334.60. The applicant and her family are in the process of purchasing a home here in Sioux Falls. And this lien was discovered as they were going through the process of preparing to close. The house is located on West 58th Street, sale price $192,000. And the closing is scheduled for April 22nd. The applicant requests a compromise and release in full upon payment of $1,500. That would be 64% of the total owed amount. Excuse me. Services related to this lien were provided by Human Services, Public Defender's Office, and the Public Advocates Office, and that was between 2009 and 2010. The applicant indicates that between herself and her significant other, they have six kids, and just need to purchase a larger home. She works full-time, provided both pay stubs and income tax returns indicating a total income approximately $38,000 for last year. There, you will note, as you've looked through some of those documents, there was a tax refund, approximately $6,300. Talked to the applicant, and she said the vast majority of that, that went to pay off some debts and pay a number of bills that put them, allowed them to be in a position to be able to purchase the home. The assets, current assets include $1,300 in checking and savings account, $12,000 in savings, excuse me, in our retirement savings, and two vehicles, a 2009 Chevy and a 2000 Chrysler. The only debt listed, approximately $14,000 is listed to, is owed to a credit union. Again, we have a full review packet of information that we've provided to you. I believe the applicant is here and may want to speak with, speak to you. I've opened any questions you may have, but otherwise we turn it over to the applicant.
Is there any questions for Robert at this point? The applicant is here. If you would like to say something, you do not have to come up to the microphone, just speak really loud, and you don't have to give your name. And if you don't want to say anything, that's fine.
Hi, I am here. Yeah, I'm just, we're looking to buy a bigger house for our kids, and this is something that happened years ago. Was in a little bit of a tougher time, and we're just trying to get it settled for our kids, is what it's coming down to. Within, we're hoping that the settlement of $1,500, that's what we've been able to ground up to be able to afford.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Discussion?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly?
This one kind of poses an interesting situation. As I read, this will be bought by two people. And we have no, we have no information on the other party, which I think normally, if in a case like this, we would probably want information. If we're going to forgive a lien, we've got to have information on all parties to the contract. But until we, you know, I believe we have to have information on both parties that are in the house, on income and also, you know, the tax returns. No? Carol's saying no.
Kirsten did you?
Yeah, I can speak to it. Just to be clear, the lien that you're considering right now is personal to the applicant only for services rendered. There hasn't been a real estate transaction that would attach to any real property at this point. So while, while the real estate contract is the reason for bringing it forward, the real estate contract really doesn't have a lot to do with the validity of the lien and where it lies right now, if that makes sense.
So would it be, would the house be attached once, once it gains ownership?
As I understand the application, the lien would be forgiven in its entirety with the payment offered. If you were to accept that today, therefore, there wouldn't be any lien to go forward to attach to the property.
Additional comments?
Commissioner Heiberg?
Commissioner Bender?
I think I would be in support of this application. The applicant has shown that she's worked hard to kind of get her life turned around, has got a good job of supporting a family, and is, you know, willing to pay what amounts to, I believe about 64%, 65% of what is owed for a debt that occurred when she was much younger, and as she said, in a more difficult time in her life. So I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments?
The only comments I would make is that, in addition to what Commissioner Bender said, is she's moving from a rental circumstance to a homeownership program. And in those closing costs of about almost $11,000, she's using most of her spendable cash, if you will, and tax returns to make that happen. So to put her back on her tax roll, so to speak, and to help her with her family circumstances, I think is a good deal for us.
I would also point out that this $1,500 that we, as a motion to accept, also covers all the public defender and public advocate costs. And anything that's left is, is poor relief services. And so, a lot of times, we talk about the importance of paying public defender and public advocate costs. Commissioner Barth?
Well, I agree with that, and I, again, staying out of trouble for these years is also a good thing. And I suspect that many of our other applicants have quote-unquote "significant others" that they don't tell us, so, tell us about. And I think this shows a degree of honesty and forthrightness for this to be brought in the application.
I have a motion and a second to approve the compromise of lien with a payment of $1,500. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one. You can work with Robert to finish that up. This is a time for public comment. If anyone wants to speak to the commission on a subject that is not on the agenda, this is the time you would do it. You come forward and give your name and your address. So anybody who wants to speak about public comment? Yep, give your name and your address, please, sir.
Well, I got a problem with some land out north of town.
Your name and address.
Yep, name and address.
Dale Larson, 609 South Gardener Drive. Now, I have a problem with some land out north of town. It's called Slip Up Creek, Andy's Acres. Shortly after I got out of the service, out of Vietnam, I bought three acres of land out there. I built a house on one acre, and I sold it, and thinking that the other two acres that I could build a house on it and retire. Now I go out there and look, I was down in Texas working in an oil refinery for a while, and when I come back, the neighbor, I signed, I signed a piece of paper saying it was single-family dwellings only. Well, when I come back, the neighbors had a 300-foot-long machine shed and junkyard there in the lot next to me. There's no sense in building a $150,000 house with a junkyard next door. So he pretty much destroyed anything I wanted to do with that two acres. I want to know what I can do about it.
Well, you know, this is a public comment, and so I would suggest that I'll have you work with our staff, and we'll see how we can work through some of the...
Who's that?
Right there. Carolyn, Robert, and can help you.
Okay, I see you talked to Mr. Anderson already, and he's done, he won't give me no answers, so...
So I'll have you, I'll have you work with our staff, and if we have to have someone else, yeah.
This man right here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there anyone else that wants to talk, to comment on public comment? Okay, with that, we will move on to item number 10, which is a public hearing to conduct drainage permit application number 1603. David Heinhold, good morning.
Morning Commissioner, David Heinhold, Planning Department. As you may recall, this is a deferral from the March 29th meeting, two weeks, to allow additional time for staff and landowners and all the involved parties in this application request. As you can see, the subject property, I'll link in red, and the downstream property owners to the east of that property to meet. We've had a couple of phone calls, but no formal agreement. We met after the meeting on March 29th with the downstream property owner, the applicant, and their contractors, and bankers, and other people that were involved in that too. But nothing set in stone is agreed, agreed upon, as far as putting in tile or not putting in tile. Did talk with the applicant a few days ago. He said he'd be stopping down maybe for a drainage permit application, for potentially even working with the landowner as far as tile. But other than that, and the downstream property owner dropped off a PowerPoint presentation, which I've supplied you with their comments and everything in there. So staff, at this point, staff recommends a deferral until the May 10th county commission meeting to allow additional time to, for site visits, to meet with the applicant, the downstream property owner, and all the other involved parties as well. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Go.
Any questions for David? Commissioner Barth?
So David, was, was this deferral requested by staff then, or by either of the two parties?
So the deferral is requested by staff.
Okay. And I see that Mr. Ordall isn't here. I guess that's my observation.
Probably because he knew they were going to ask for a deferral.
Well, the other side is present.
I see that. Any other questions for David? Commissioner Action?
Well, just since it appears that the best solution for this is the parties to try to work it out, and I would like to give them an opportunity to do that, I would accept the staff proposal to defer it till the, and I would make a motion to defer this until the May 10th meeting.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, is there?
Madam Chair, I just want to say, I hope that they do work together to get a solution to this, because that's always the best.
I have a motion and a second to defer item number 10 until May 10th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Item number 11 is issue proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is April 10th through 16th, 2016. Darren Ketchum, good morning Darren.
Good morning, Commissioner. Darren Ketchum, Director of Metro Communications in Sioux Falls. While Robert's pulling that up, I did have a couple of staff members that have had the opportunity to come down today. So with me today is Jessica Mundell, our Deputy Director, Adrian Burden, one of our communications operators. She's worked with us now for, it'll be a year this month. And Jared Hoffman, who's worked with us now for 10 years, and he's an advanced communications operator, and he also is the president of the AFSCME union that our staff belong to. So I really appreciate them being able to come down here and see this, because truly the proclamation that you issue is for the work that they do every day. It's for the 90,000 911 calls that are answered in our communications center, for the 175,000 non-emergency calls that are answered every year, for the 200,000 calls for service that we process, for the 5 million radio transmissions we handle. That's what they do every day. You know, recently, I had somebody that's not a frequent visitor of the 911 center come through, and they said, oh, you must be doing a training exercise today, because I heard him talking about infant that wasn't breathing. And I think for people that aren't a part of the public safety world every day, those things don't seem realistic, and they don't feel like something that happens normally in our community. But I can tell you that the issues they deal with every day are, most of the time, the worst days of many people's lives. And it takes a lot of dedication and support. So thanks for being here, and thank you for your support.
Darren, did you want to read that proclamation for us?
I'd love to.
Can I put you on the spot? How do you do that?
Excuse me. Whereas, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of sheriff's deputies, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our deputies and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone Metro Communications, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our deputies and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of Metro Communications Agency have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas communications operators has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Minnehaha County declares the week of April 10th through April 16th, 2016, to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Minnehaha County. In honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe, sign this 12th day of April, 2016.
Thank you Darren. And I'd like to say thank you to those that have come. It's nice to see faces. I know that when I pick up the phone and call that scary number 911, that they're there, and that's, I mean, you think, I think everybody thinks about that on a regular basis, that I know that if I need help, it's right there. And usually, a calm person on the other end of the phone to calm, calm your fears when you're probably in the worst day of your life. So, additional comments?
I'd just like to thank Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Barth, our two current Metro Council members. Commissioner Benega served on the Metro Council for many years as a city counselor and as a county commissioner. So we really appreciate your support, and the entire commission. Not to mention the support we receive through the many county agencies, departments, with the state's attorney's office, the sheriff's department, emergency management, all of the volunteers. We're one piece of a larger team, and so we truly appreciate your support. So, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Kelly?
They're doing a great job, and I've been on the board there for several years. They don't just rest on their laurels. They're continually changing and improving, and it just gets better every year. So I'd be very proud to make the motion to proclaim the, or to accept the proclamation.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks Darren.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Number 12 is consider a resolution to establish a fund of capital accumulation fund in the amount of $1 million in accordance with South Dakota courtified laws 7-21-51.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And if my voice leaves me for a second, I'd like you to know that I was pretty sick this weekend. I maybe should have come in for a drainage permit, but didn't need it, so. This memo is, this thing that I'm doing today is a follow-up from last week here. Cindy had indicated that she'd like me to bring this back a little more complete, and the purpose, the account, we're wanting to establish a capital accumulation account to pay for the ERP system that the county's investigating right now. Resolution has been crafted in regards, that's enclosed. The action that we're requesting today is that the chairperson be able to sign the proposed resolution. If that happens, the Auditor's Office will then build a specific ASN for that account. Funds would then be designated from the general fund into the capital accumulation account. We're asking for a million dollars be available, or a lesser amount if deemed suitable by the commission. Every proposal for expenditure of these funds would be brought before this commission. I'm open for questions or comments and thoughts.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Benega?
Bob, I'm for establishing this capital accumulation fund. We've talked about it for years, and there has to be a way to fund capital needs in the future, and I think it's an appropriate way to start this process. My only concern about doing it right now, as far as, and I would advocate that we do establish the fund today, but to establish a dollar amount. And the reason I say that is, we're not completely through the budget process. In fact, we haven't even started. And we already know, the good news is, is that our CPI for 2017 is zero. So I think we got one piece of the puzzle, but we don't have the total picture. And at this point, I would rather wait to establish the transfer of those dollars, or whatever dollar amount the budget allows, versus frankly, making a commitment now and not having all of the budget numbers to look at, all the capital accounts that we're going to have to talk about. But it's an important process to get this thing going, and I appreciate the fact that has been accomplished, but I'm a little hesitant about putting a dollar amount on a check that I know that I'm not sure about what I have for a cash balance.
And I, Commissioner, I understand your position perfectly, and I've thought about that a lot. I guess, I guess, you know, if you want to cook it down to the real reason that I'm standing here is, you know, between IT and my staff, we've got quite a few hours into this process, and we're going forward and kind of looking at over the edge of the cliff, so to speak. And I know that every one of you have indicated your support for this CRP project too, and I guess that's what we're kind of looking for here, is some way of going forward. You know, as far as the amount, you know, you mentioned that we really don't have an amount nailed down. You know, I'd have to defer to Monty on that. I guess I would, I would say at this point, it probably would fall under contract negotiation, so I'm a little, you know, I don't want to go there quite yet. But how about during the budget process, and, you know, we look for the timing of this to be a little bit better, and then we'll bring it back. Would that be agreeable?
I would... Commissioner Kelly?
Bob, by resolution, we could take money out of this fund if we need it, correct?
That's correct, yes.
I mean, it's not a dedicated absolute, but it does put it away so that hopefully we will not have to opt out for this new system, and we'll be able to, we'll have at least a significant amount of cash to put towards it.
Well, that's, that was our idea. And, you know, I understand both sides of it about, you know, looking at the overall budget, you know, I guess it's our opinion down in the Auditor's Office that, yes, we can afford to do that at this time, but, you know, we certainly understand the other needs of everybody else in this county. But I'd also like to point out that this is not just for the Auditor's Office, it is countywide, folks. And it's something that I feel strongly we still have to do. Mr. McFarland, who's out there retiring and riding his motorcycle presumably, he felt the same way, and I think there's a lot of folks that recognize our need, including the commission. So, you know, it's kind of up in the air, and I understand that. I just thought that, you know, bringing it forward to raise some awareness towards the hours that we do have in it, and that I know the budget process is coming forward, and if you want to put it to there, that's fine.
Auditor Litz, can't we just pass a resolution without a dollar amount in it and open this ASN? You don't have to put money in it.
I'm not certain about it. I guess I'd have to defer to...
We're going to defer to Kirsten, sorry.
As I was just going to, if I may, Commissioner, the resolution when passed has to set the maximum amount, but it does have to have some sort of dollar figure attached to it to pass the resolution, according to the statute. That's my opinion, anyway.
Can we put a buck in it?
Well, it doesn't say you have to put so much in it, it just says you have to establish a maximum amount for it when you pass the resolution. That's the...
Well, I'm not certain that I, you know, we should go through all the work if we don't have that amount established yet. As I see it, there's two things. Number one is the overall budget, and where we're going to fall in in the scheme of things. And then number two would be a closer amount for the immediate needs for next year for that, that amount of money that we're going to need to spend on the ERP system, so...
Commissioner Bender?
Well, and I appreciate as well you bringing this issue forward, and I think it is an important discussion. I've struggled with it this week, and even last week, and I know we had a conversation about it. You know, it doesn't, while I think it makes sense to do this, I agree with Commissioner Benega that it makes sense to do it when we have a little better idea of what kind of numbers we're talking about. I mean, really, at the end of the day, it doesn't really change anything. I mean, we, even if we set the capital accumulation fund, when we go to do a budget, we still have to reflect it as a spend-down on our reserves, and it will come out negative. So in my mind, it doesn't really necessarily change anything, and so I think I would, I would agree with Commissioner Benega. I'd like to have a little better idea of what numbers we're realistically talking about to, before we establish this.
Commissioner Kelly?
You know, we keep delaying and delaying action on stuff, waiting for more information, but I frankly think it's time to make a decision and do something. Nothing's binding us to the million dollars. If budget shows otherwise, we won't transfer a million dollars, or we'll transfer it back out by resolution. But I just, I, we can keep messing around with this thing and keep spending staff time to bring it back, and I frankly would like to see us just act today and just get this process continuing on. Other comments, I'll make a motion.
We have additional comments. Commissioner Barth?
Bob, I believe that we can have up to a $5 million fund, right?
That's correct.
If we pass the 1 million thing today, and we decided at the end of our budget year that it should be 3.5 million, would there, would that be possible, or would we have to start from scratch?
No, certainly, we can add funds to that at any time. So then, depending on how much we had spent with your approval on ERP system up at that point, it'd be the combined total of the two subs.
And Madam Chair, if I may, so, and if we chose to establish the fund and put nothing in it today, and maybe make a deposit in it in July or something, that would also be okay?
That would be fine as well. You know, I would have to defer to Monty as far as the timing. You know, we're kind of getting to the point with this ERP system, and, you know, some of the vendors we're looking at, we're going to have to make a decision pretty soon, and then some of the real costs will be here. And if we don't have the funds, you know, maybe we could come to you for a special allotment at that time. The reason that, you know, I'm kind of concerned about this, is it is a special thing. It's out of the ordinary, it's out of the, what we normally do in the budget process, and that's why I gave it some special attention. I understand all the, all the processes, and if, I mean, you know, all the concerns here, and if we want to put it off for a while, I'm perfectly okay with that. You know, but like I say, if we do start getting some expenses that we have to look seriously at paying, you know, we'd bring them to you at that point, if it's before the budget process is completed.
Commissioner Barth?
I guess one more question, Bob. Does this take five votes to establish?
No, I need three of you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Benega?
Bob, we all know that this is part of the software updates, responsibilities that we have to change the system... to change the system that we have that's antiquated, that frankly is a liability to the organization from a lot, lot of reasons, there's no question about that. All the work that you guys have done in the last few months to make this happen is still important to this process and in fact, in a couple of days or weeks, I'm not sure exactly your timeframe, we're gonna open an RFP that may tell you about what the cost of that system is, rather than guessing. There's really no reason for us to have to move forward with this until we know what that is and I'll just go back to the conversation that we had last Monday night with the ambulance services. You know, they were all concerned about the fact that we had talked, or somebody had talked, I don't think any of the commissioners had talked to somebody about cutting services and they had a large group of people here to talk about their funding needs. Frankly, with a zero percent growth in our operating budget and not knowing exactly what we're gonna have to do to satisfy our operating concerns, waiting two months is not an issue, from my perspective. And in fact, if we have eighty-four months to expend the funds, all we've done is set that sunset out two months and to dedicate it now is a, is a rosy feeling, but I don't think it's the right way to do this until we frankly have heard from everybody.
Understood.
Additional comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I'd like to make a motion.
You make a motion.
I'd move that we accept resolution number MC sixteen.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to approve the resolution? Better have a roll call vote, oh, Commissioner Bender?
Bender?
Excuse me, excuse Mr. Benega.
Sorry.
That's okay, there's so many bees, there's so many bees.
Almost the same. Kirsten, would you just reiterate the fact that you indicate that we shouldn't be doing a resolution unless we fund it?
No, all I'm saying is you have to establish a maximum amount in passing the resolution. Your draft resolution, as it stands right now, has the maximum actually set at five million dollars, which is the statutory maximum. I would say if there's any doubt about your ultimate amount that's going to be needed, there's no reason not to set it at that statutory maximum. You'll have the most latitude, if you will, to fund, not fund, return if not needed, so.
So we do or do not have to put any money into that account currently?
Well, here, here's the issue, your draft resolution has moved, as I understand it says, you have determined that the initial amount to transfer is one million dollars from the general fund unassigned fund balance. So as I interpret the resolution that was moved here right now, that that would transfer that one million dollars? Is that correct, Auditor Litz?
That was our, that was our intent.
Okay, so that's what this resolution will do if you pass it today. It will transfer the one million, but allow you to accumulate five million under the scheme.
So could, could we?
If I read it.
Could we have struck that one whereas for the transfer and it still would have been legal?
You can craft it however you'd like with the initial funding, but you have to establish, the only dollar figure you have to do is establish a maximum figure for the fund when you pass the resolution.
And I can probably address that, okay, thank you. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Yes, as you talk about the maximum that's out of there, we certainly would be comfortable with a much lower number than that if you wanted to leave it at, say, one or 1.5 or 2 million with, as a maximum. We would just interject that at this point, that it doesn't have to be the five.
I don't think there's a debate about the maximum. There's a debate of whether we want to transfer money today.
Yeah, a million dollars today.
Yeah.
But you do have a motion second before you right now, so.
I have a motion and a second before us. That would be that the resolution as written, and I think we should do a roll call vote.
I just.
Oh, Commissioner Kelly?
You mentioned, yes, the money would be transferred into the account, but that the ability to get that money back out if during the budget, because budget, budget session, we, we realize that we need some of that money. It doesn't, is it specifically for the ERP? I guess it is, but, but we, we have a lot of latitude within it to move that money back if we need to, is that correct, Bob?
That's correct, I mean, it'll take some effort and, you know, we'd be glad to work with you on that, but that's.
Good point.
Kirsten has a comment again.
I mean, arguably, I guess by the structure of the statute and how it's written, I would say, I would advise that if you do do that at a later date, that you pass a resolution stating that, that the funds are no longer needed for that specific purpose. The relevant section says if the specific purpose for which the funds are accumulated is no longer necessary, the fund shall revert. I would recommend that you resolve to do that later, but just so you're clear on the mechanism of getting it out and what you need to find.
Commissioner Kelly?
Motion?
Pardon me?
Can I amend my motion?
You can amend your motion.
I'd move that the whereas transfer a million dollars would be changed to one hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I have an amended motion that would change the one million to one hundred thousand.
As the initial investment?
As the initial investment.
Is there a second to the amended motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that for conversation.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for an amendment for a hundred thousand.
Could I ask Monty a question, please? Monty, I know it puts you in a negative position and I frankly don't want an exact number, but do you have a, at least a range of what you might be talking about? I know the range can be any place based on the number of packages you might want to put together.
That is a slippery slope to discuss right now.
If you don't want to answer, don't have the information, I don't want you to answer it because I want the information to be correct. When are you going to be opening the RFPs?
We're still in, we're still going through the process.
Okay.
Some of that cost information from the vendors is available, but we're, we're still in the selection process, so I don't know if I can publicly speak on behalf of that.
Wouldn't want you to because that's still down the road.
One thing I will say though is that if we establish this and put some money in it, that may give us some flexibility to start moving forward, as long as we have the, the general commitment from the commission to move forward with this. We could come to you and we could start going through this process because a project like this is gonna have, you know, payments. I don't know what those are going to be, but it would at least give us an avenue where we could start the process and get going and, and have an account to draw funds out of, without having to go to, through the process of, of a bond, if it's determined that a bond is necessary down the road. Because going through that process of bonding has, you know, some costs associated with it, may not even be necessary.
Commissioner? Commissioner Bender?
So Monty, you say some money, I mean, some money could mean twenty bucks. I'm curious, when you say, I mean, I'm curious to know what kind of, what kind of number allows you to feel like you can start to move forward? What's the minimum number that allows you to feel like you can move forward?
The motion currently is a hundred thousand dollars. I think that at least gives us to a point where we have something to work with. That, that could be, so with this fund, my understanding, right, with the maximum amount, you could, we could come back several times and we could do transfers from the general fund into this capital accumulation fund, is my understanding. And if that's the case, you know, we, we could come back as needed for that funding or we may get to a point where we use so choose to, to bond out for the cost of the project. I think it'd give you some flexibility. I will say that as we've gone through this process already, we've had vendors early on in the process ask us if this is a funded project. That, that has been challenging because vendors want to know, are we going through all this work of flying out here and doing demos and all of this for nothing? So that's been difficult for us to already deal with that question. And how we've answered it is we feel that the commission is committed to this project, but we couldn't honestly tell them that the project is funded.
Commissioner Bender?
Thank you for that response. The hundred thousand dollars would show a commitment to the vendor, but by budget deadline of, what, September 30th? Will you have a better?
Yes, absolutely.
Idea of what that total might be for whatever transfer could potentially be required? Or frankly, if it's a bonding issue rather than a cash issue?
Yes, we will have that information certainly available by then. I think that would probably work out all right from a timing perspective.
I personally can support the hundred to get the vendors started so we can move along. To do it for a million dollars with no cost estimates at this point is more of a stretch than I would like to make. Even if we show positive cash flow, that is not the issue. As we all know, it's based on what our closing costs are gonna be and what our budget's gonna be, so.
I think it does buy us some flexibility, so I guess I'll stay, say that. As you may know, the public safety folks are looking at their options as well. So those are some additional costs that could be coming down the road as well, so.
I think the list and the length of the line is longer than we think it is.
It, it does provide flexibility, I guess that, that avenue I like as compared to if we're only looking at the, the bond option for these solutions, it doesn't give us a very good way to start.
Any other comments?
I have an amended motion to change the line.
We have to vote on the amendment, do we not?
We have to vote on the amendment. That would transfer, change the transfer amount to a hundred thousand dollars. Do we want a roll call or do we want to do, do a roll call vote? I don't think we need to, but roll call vote? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hiebarger?
Yes. Now, vote on the, the original, no, not the original, the resolution with the amendment attached to it.
The main motion as amended.
Main motion as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number thirteen is authorize a chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for human services caseworkers. Good morning, Jamie.
Yeah, good morning. So.
Do you want to identify yourself in your department, please, sorry?
Yeah, Jamie Phelps with the Human Services Department. So this'll just be for the signing of the annual Lincoln County, Minnehaha County contract to provide casework services for emergency services and medical for Lincoln County and to fund the position, the Lincoln County position at sixty percent Lincoln County and forty percent Minnehaha County. The contract virtually remains the same as it was last year outside of some minor increases in personnel cost. That would be the salary and the benefits there, those went up slightly and then as well as the mileage, a small decrease in the mileage by eighty dollars. Otherwise, the contract remains the same. The total cost being an increase this year of one thousand seven hundred and forty total and that amounts to an increase monthly of a hundred and forty-five dollars. So pretty minor changes there, any questions on it?
Any questions for Jamie? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, question, I guess.
Jamie, back before this was first, deal was first made with Lincoln County, they didn't even have a formal process, right? I mean, it was just Jeff comes in and they pay my rent and Robert comes in and they don't pay his rent, depending on who they like better. So has, has it changed a lot since? I mean, now they must all be much more cognizant of the professionalism of this type of work as opposed to the one of situation that was going before. Do you have any observations on that, or?
Yeah, they have the guidelines, just like we have guidelines, that are based on the South Dakota codified laws and we've got internal procedures as well that we go off of, they'll lay up elaborate on those and they all draw from, like I said, those, the South Dakota laws. So, you know, it's all in sync with that. And so I think for Lincoln County standpoint and from Minnehaha County standpoint, we're all doing what we need to do, providing the services that we need to provide for the public and that type of thing, so.
If I might follow up, and this might be for Carrie there too, are we charging them enough?
Good morning, Commissioner, Carrie Benz with Human Services. I would just agree with Jamie's statement that I think that there is an increased level of professionalism for that office. Prior to us joining with Lincoln County to provide those human services, the services that we do provide down there, it actually, I think they were pretty lost in that department. And I think they knew that by utilizing our services, we had the experience, we had the knowledge, we've been able to establish the procedures, the guidelines, all those type of things that they didn't have before. So do I think that we have really brought them up to, up to speed? Yes, absolutely. The commission there has been incredibly welcoming, have been very thankful that we've done that and so we have a really good relationship with them, it's been very positive. As to your second question, I think we do charge them enough. I think that the time that we spend in Lincoln County, we only go down there one day a week and then we otherwise take applications for Lincoln County, right here in our Minnehaha County office. And so I think the beauty of that is it allows flexibility for the clients. Those that live in Lincoln County, they are able to come also to this office. And so I think what it does is it just really forms a good collaborative effort to make sure that the clients that we do serve have best access to the services that we have, so.
Commissioner Benega?
She said Commissioner Bender again.
No, I didn't, I said Benega. I said Commissioner Benega.
I think you ought to go first because Jeff and I agree it was Bender.
It was not. It was not, I wrote it right here, look at that.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll be happy to go first. I just want to, I think that this is a great example. We hear a lot about collaborative efforts in our community, between the city and Lincoln County and Minnehaha County and I think there are a lot of collaborative efforts that are underway that just don't get the public attention. And I think this is a great example where we're able to kind of leverage our experience and our history in this area to help the residents of both Lincoln and Minnehaha County to receive the services they need in the most effective and efficient manner possible. You know, we do that with human resources and we do that in a lot of different areas and I just, I thank you very much for kind of leading that effort here in human services.
Yeah, I would add that it's been really good for the public, you know, like you said, it, it, you know, back before we had this agreement, we would have people coming into our front desk that were perhaps out of an emergency medication or something or had children in the home, they were getting evicted that day or things like that. And there's really not anything we could do because it was a Lincoln County resident on the south side of Sioux Falls and as we grew into Lincoln County so fast, this past decade and continue to grow, there's more and more people on the south side of Sioux Falls that needed that type of assistance and they had to be told, well, you gotta go down to Canton, you know? And, you know, it just wasn't conducive to the situation, the emergency situation that they were facing. So I think this allowed us to both serve in the Minnehaha County office as well as down there in Canton for those folks that are further south. So it's the best of both worlds, so it just really helps to serve the public and in the best manner, you know, so.
Commissioner Benega?
I think Commissioner Benega Junior stated exactly what I was going to say, but the other question that I might just throw out for thought, this is about a two or a three percent increase in the contract amount. What would happen in the contract if in fact Lincoln County had a twenty or thirty percent increase in the number of case loads that you're working with? Is there an opportunity for you to go back into the contract and renegotiate?
Absolutely. The Lincoln County Commission has really been really friendly about that in regards to knowing that obviously our costs do affect them. But I think they also know and we've really been planting seeds all the way along the past ten years that those costs are going to change. And we've been planting the seeds that Lincoln County is growing. to change, and we've been planting the seeds that Lincoln County is growing significantly. So as that happens, I think they're feeling better prepared, and I also believe that now with our new computer system and being able to track number, I think we'll be able to better serve them as well. We're actually going to be providing them with an update, too, from 2015, so they can have a good gauge. Obviously, they're facing budget as well, so I think we do a good job of providing them a great service with the minimal of cost.
Commissioner Kelly.
There's one point that I think is really important, and that's that they can come to Sioux Falls office. A lot of these people maybe don't even have the transportation ability to get down to Canton, so I think this is a really good example of, of what we're doing towards intergovernmental cooperation, and the fact that they can come here, hopefully that'll someday extend into treasure and some of the other areas, too, so.
Additional comments or a motion?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 14 is Minnehaha County Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Kelly.
I don't know if we talked about this before. Gerald and I are on the HRC, the Safe Home Management Board, or whatever it's called, but we just had our audit from Ida Bailey, and it was very good. There was one small detail in there about income statements, which they're going to rectify, and other than that, I thought it was a very glorious report, and I think we can be comfortable that the, the operation is going very well as far as the real estate part of it.
Any additional liaison reports? Is there any new business? Commissioner Barth?
People in the city of Sioux Falls and Hartford should vote today.
I was going to say that under old business, yes. And it's nice to see there were a few people in the audience that had their I voted stickers on today, so that's wonderful. Is there any old business that would, for adjournment into executive session for personnel? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.